Okay, welcome to our city council work session. It's Tuesday the 3rd of June. Happy to have everybody here. So we will start with roll call and that will be very simple. We have all here except Travis and Lynn. Lynn is on Zoom. Travis is at a planned engagement. So all the rest are here and ready for action. I'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance. Anybody like to lead us? How about I will?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to ask if someone would like to offer an invocation or give us an inspirational thought?
I'll do an invocation.
Okay, thank you.
Our heavenly father, thankful that we're able to gather together city staff and city council and we're thankful that we live in such a great community and that we have the privilege and opportunity to serve in this community. Please guide us and direct us and help us to understand the needs of our community. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We are going to discuss few items, the upcoming business, other business and some upcoming agenda items. And would like to get underway with that.
Okay.
I can, go ahead.
So mayor and council, can you turn this volume down for me a little bit? Mayor and council, I did just the first thing as this is other business, there's no action item, but just an email that I sent out earlier today regarding a couple of items. We need to apply for the Utah County Recreation Grant. And the two proposed projects are part of that. So it's about almost $12,000, a little less than 12,000. About half of that would go towards helping us out with the archery course, which is down at the north end of the Harvest View. Remember that we're going to be putting a trail in there that's already approved through the the previous budget and RAP tax and this will necessitate a move. But there's some equipment that's needed there to kind of bolster that activity. The other one would be to help beef up, change out some of the dirt in some of the ball fields. Those are the two items that were recommended. And then also a name for 24 acre open space that we'll have in Summit Ridge. Some of that's already been dedicated, more of it will be coming as they plan the last couple of phases out there in the hills and Summit Ridge. So if you're good with the, with the two items, we just need a direction from you to go ahead and apply for that recreation grant funding under those two auspices. Or if you have other ideas or thoughts.
So I, I know this was brought up in the RAP tax committee meeting of whether RAP tax funds to go fund that. And one of the discussion items was that do we want to put the archery range where it's at? One of the concerns was that I personally had was if we apply for this grant, is that now a permanent change that we're making to our master plan? That we can't move it when we expand and fully realize what the plan is for that park? I, I was a little concerned about that because I, I was like, I don't know if we've really discussed like changing, that significant change to the park? Or whether that was the right place or not? I'm not opposed. I just didn't, I'm just not. I, I, I don't know if it's the right place.
So we can have that conversation with staff. I don't know the answer to that. If it's how, if it has to be permanent fixtures. As indicated in the email, it does have to be for specific purposes. And the purposes that we're talking about could serve for both the archery or the property in general as we continue to move forward. But recognizing, as John indicated in the email that I sent to you is that there's a, there's a part of that park that's likely not going to be developed for some time, 10, 20 years, maybe just due to, to lack of of impact fee funding or other funding. And so I'm not sure that it has to be permanent there, but we can certainly ask that question. I don't know.
Yeah, because I, I know that was, I think at least with the RAP tax, right? It's a permanent thing?
It doesn't have to be. RAP tax can be, impact fees are the one things that have to be, that have to be permanent.
I think that's why RAP tax committee didn't, so didn't recommend that because it's a great program and it's doing great where it's at. It's just, do we want to like lock ourselves in?
Sure. I can find that out if it's, as long as it's not locking ourselves in, are you good with that direction? To go with those two items for the recreation grant?
Yeah, I'm.
For 6,000 for the, for the, or not. I'm, I'm happy to answer.
I'm just trying to think of what anything you would set up for the archery. It's something you could move anyways. I mean.
Right, right.
Are the targets. My understanding was that it'd be a little bit more permanent when it was brought up for RAP taxes that it would be more permanent improvements. Some of that, obviously you, with effort, you could move, but.
Well, the archery course improvements on the rap is Harvest View Shade Targets Venue.
Curb cut, some, some road base to bring in and have parking.
It might not be cheap to move, but you could take it out and move it. If it's the targets and lanes or something, that's not. It might be pretty set there, but it's never permanent.
What are they planning for a backstop with this? Generally you don't just lay a target out there and hope that nobody's running.
Sounded like they're gonna make a berm, right? Or something?
Yeah.
Yes.
I responded to Norman, an email on that. And of the two choices between archery range or ball field dirt, the usage that appears to be happening at the archery seems like the better place to do that.
Well, we're, our recommendation is both. So one would be 6,000, the other would be 5,800, something like that for the remainder.
11,855 and both of them.
So we can get both of them if that's your direction. Again, we don't, we're not making a decision here tonight. We just need your direction so that we can go ahead and apply for the funds. Those funds would come in the form of a recreation grant from the county after August 1st. And that would come for signature by the mayor anyway. So.
When, when do we have to apply?
By the 9th, which I think is this, yeah, a week away.
I'm okay with it. If it is something permanent, like he said, then we have to change the whole configuration of that park. That might be, not, might not be something we want to do, but I can't imagine it being permanent.
As long as you're okay with that and it's not permanent, if it is, we'll even send out another email and say, hey, we would recommend X, Y, or Z, something of a different nature, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that's fine with me. What about the alternative option though with the restrooms?
Yeah, we have two restrooms. It wouldn't be a Harvest View. Those restrooms are fine, but we have restrooms at Centennial Park and restrooms up at Orchard Hills that could use some sprucing up, new fixtures. Toilets, I don't know if it's toilets, but I think he's got some stuff on there that we could use for that as well. We could use that as an alternative. If for some reason the, the archery is not the place to go.
Oh, okay, okay. But that's not like, yeah, I'm fine. I, I, I'm in support of, of that.
Okay.
Not the restrooms, but the restrooms are fine if the staff wants the restrooms instead of other.
You're not in support of restrooms?
No.
So the two options that were the first two, we'll go ahead and go with that unless there's something different than, than it makes it more permanent. We'll find out about that. Okay?
Can't imagine it would be. That should be fine.
And the other thing is, is knowing that we're going to get that total 24 acres out there in Summit Ridge. It's up on the hill, kind of on a berm. It's, it's, it's high enough that it's not going to be built on and it's.
Chapel is being built?
It's, it's east of the chapel, that little knoll that's east of the chapel, the new chapel. And they're just, we're just looking for a name on that. Is that Summit Ridge Disc Golf Course? Is it Summit Ridge? Hilltop Disc Golf Course, just looking for some names and thoughts and ideas.
Show it on a map really quick.
Didn't give me enough time to think of something clever, so.
Yeah, I'll pull it up right now. Hang on just a second. I'll pull it up and you can see it.
It's your clever name.
I don't know. You need to give me a week. I'm not that quick.
Jason, I thought you would have a clever name.
My improv names are behind me.
The first thing that came to my mind was Nebo View.
No, I'm so tired of Nebo. Everything's Nebo.
Well, that knoll had a great view of Nebo.
How about the grassy knoll?
Well, especially since they're shooting arrows off of it.
Those frisbees.
Dallas, Texas, grassy knoll.
The Scottish Highland.
How about the weedy knoll? It's gonna be weeds.
You know, you could name it something Scottish.
Sage Bush Hill.
Southern Bray. I honestly didn't think Sage Bush was real.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull that up really quick. Let me pull that over.
To keep with the community.
So this is a part of it, this backside over here. And Lynn, let me share that so that you've got that as well.
There's one, one map, a little more up to date, isn't there? That has that in there?
So these are all the homes in Summit Ridge over in the towns. This will come down and sorry, this, the hills. This is only showing about eight acres of it. There's this parcel that's highlighted. There's another parcel that's here that's been dedicated as well, as soon as the map will update.
So that's a long strip.
And then there's another part of it right here that will also be dedicated. That's not currently shown right now. So does that give you an idea of where that's at?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it is in Summit Ridge.
I can't remember. Is this, is there going to be infrastructure there or is?
No, this is minimally improved. It's just a, a natural open space. There's going to be some, there's going to be some benches. A walking trail that's gravel basically.
That's awesome. That's good.
It'll be nice.
Could be. I don't remember on that one. Anyway, that's the area right there. So it would be, Summit Ridge would be fitting. But we can do.
It's the city edge. Yeah, yeah.
We, we don't need to decide on this tonight, but just think about it. And if you have other ideas or thoughts, we've given you a couple in the one of them that seemed to sit well more than, better than others is the, just Summit Ridge Disc Golf Course, something of that nature. So if you think about it, it's going to be a whole lot like the Allen Pond Disc Golf Course. It's going to be very natural. There's no grasses other than native grasses. There's no lawn there. There's no sod or hydro seeding that's going to be done. It's just a, a natural open space area. And eventually, you know, through RAP tax or other means, we may go put some Disc Golf Course, you know, teas and tea boxes and, and baskets like what we have at the other one up at Allen Pond. So that's the, kind of the general thinking of that area.
But there won't be a body of water that eats your discs.
There will be no body of water that you cannot get your discs back from, no. That probably would be in people's backyards.
Find frisbees in the backyard.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts on that? If not.
They're only going to be reaching out to you.
Lynn, do you have any input on that?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, we got the volume down too.
The volume's perfect.
Yeah, okay, perfect. All right. So mayor, you want to go to the regular agenda now? Is that where you want to go? Or do you have other items that you want to discuss in the work session?
I was going to discuss some of that library stuff, but maybe we'll just make a point and go over it and see how this turns out because there's just too much disinformation that people seem to be listening to. They want to fill out all kinds of things and it doesn't make sense. So yeah, maybe we'll move that down.
Okay. You want to go to the regular agenda then?
Yeah, let's go through it.
Okay, we got minutes on the regular agenda. Any questions or concerns on minutes? Okay, city expenditures, little small this time, which is again unusual. I would not get used to that if I were you. That just is, happens to be this particular point in time. There wasn't a lot of, you know, bond payments or, or other things that went out. So and then we have some surplus property. There's two more bucking shoots that will be surplus. You may recall that through the, the current budget that we have new bucking shoots that are coming. That my understanding is they'll be here in a couple of weeks, three, four weeks, and they'll be ready and installed for the rodeo. So that'll be great.
Is there any, is there any market for the old ones?
No idea. I don't know the answer to that. So we will surplus them and then typically with something like this, it will just go on the state surplus website and be bid on. So if there is a market, there will be. If not, it'll, they'll go for a little bit of nothing. So we'll see how that goes out, works out. Business spotlight will be AutoZone. Councilmember Adcock, you'll be, I assume, reading that in the, in the.
I haven't been told that.
Okay. Great, great. And then if the chamber's here, they'll give a chamber of commerce report. I know they were here last time, so I'm not sure they're going to be here today, but if they are, we can do that. Coming up on public hearings. First, a public hearing will be on just the regular city 2025, 2026 fiscal year tentative budget and transfers. So you may remember a month ago, we approved, you approved the tentative budget. That tentative budget still stands at this point in time. And now we give the, the public an opportunity to come in and be heard if they have any concerns. If you have any concerns on that tentative budget, that, that will be for all four entities, the city, the CDRA, the SSD, which is the, the Special Service District for Water. And then also the, the LBA, which is the local building authority, which is how we finance the public works building. So those will all be.
The CDRA one is separate in the CDRA.
It is. Well, each one of those bodies we have to go into. So the city will be done in the normal council meeting and you have to go into an LBA. You have to go into the CDRA and you have to go into the SSD. I do want to highlight item number seven, that, that item that is there. Let me, I apologize. I don't have this pulled up. I have my technical difficulties going on. So let me pull up my memo that I have on that. As you know, Senate Bill 81, I think is the number on it. It'll tell me as soon as I get this open. What's that?
It's your favorite bill.
It is my least favorite bill. Well, that would be a hard one. I have a memo on that. I can't get to it right now, but essentially what it is, is that this Senate bill was passed so that any increase that you offer to an executive, municipal executive officer, now I want to be clear on that. That is not you guys, the council and the mayor. The, the bill defines executive, municipal executive officers as myself as a city manager or a city administrator, Jason as assistant city manager or assistant administrator. And all of our directors are, so there's seven of us that are included. Finance. That's right. Sorry. Eight of us, not seven of us. My bad. So you have six directors and you have Jason and I that are included in that municipal officers. Essentially because we're considering doing a COLA, which is the 4.6, which is the same as all the rest of the employees and up to a 1.5% merit, which again is the same as all the other employees. Those are, those are being considered as part of the budget, part of the, and we have to have this public hearing before the, the final budget is approved. Now, I will also mention to you that in the interim, since Shannon didn't have anything to do for a little while, she has done a citywide salary survey like we do have done in the last year, last couple of years. And we have four positions in the city, one of which is a director level. Not myself, not Jason, but his director level that will, that are eligible for up to a 4% market analysis increase. Now again, remember there's three ways that, that all employees get treated with potential increases. One is COLA. One is the merit that we've already talked about. The last one is market. And that basically means that we go out and look at other librarians. We look at other police officers. We look at other, whatever the position might be. We look at all of those and we have, I think there's 240 plus or minus municipalities that participate in the survey software that we use. And we compare it to similar cities, Linden, Hurricane, not Pleasant Grove, but Brigham City, other. Some of them are a little bit bigger than we are. Some of them have different budgets than we do. But we try to compare to comparable cities and look at what that looks like. And there's, there's four positions in the city that will receive a 4% market increase. So that's on top of the, the COLA and the, the possible merit. It's not a very big budgetary item. It's, it's under $10,000 for all four of those different positions. So happy to answer any questions that you have on that, but, and I will have the memo and read the memo in the, the meeting. For whatever reason, my computer is having issues. But that will be an open public hearing.
So you're saying in addition to the COLA?
Yes. Four positions out of the over 100 that we have in the city have, through the salary survey indicate that they can receive, they should receive a, a small market increase.
And you're saying that's the directors.
Take them way up the line. That takes maybe into the mid range.
Yeah, this does not get them, this does not get them over the top of anybody else. It just brings them up to where again, a, a level playing field for.
That's four directors, you're saying?
It's not four directors, four, four positions in the city, one of which is a director.
Oh, okay, okay.
So that's why I'm putting it in here because if one of them wasn't a director, it's not part of the public hearing. But I'm just bringing it to your attention that because we've had council members in the past say, well, what about this department or what about that department? We've done a citywide salary survey and those four positions are merit to market increase of up to 4%. Not all of them will be 4%, but up to 4%. And again, the, the total budget impact on that is, on all four of those positions is less than $10,000.
I have a question.
Okay.
Did, did I send you that Salt Lake City increase that they were proposing this year?
I haven't seen anything.
It's over 15% for the PD alone.
Yeah.
And, and it amounted to just that increase, more than our entire budget.
Yeah, yeah. Well, when they have.
But I, I had that. Maybe I'll send that to you.
Yeah, I'd love to see that. And that's a reality that we're dealing with is that you know, cities that have a lot of money, have a lot of revenue.
Well, they're the ones that are trying to hire away our PD.
Right.
Every chance they get, and they have so much more to offer, you know?
Yeah, so Salt Lake City, for instance, has over 500 officers, but they're down 100 right now. They're, they're short. I, I can't even fathom that. We've been short a couple of officers at times, but 500 officers and they're down 100. They, they can't hire 100 officers. And again, it's not necessarily our, our officers that are leaving, I'm focusing on PD here, but it's a domino effect, right? Maybe West Valley goes to Salt Lake and Sandy goes to West Valley and Riverton and, and Lehigh. And, and so it's just a domino effect of wherever we go. They're, they're just this, again, for lack of a better term, an arms race that I, that's my term. Is, is that just, we, we have to compete with that or we're not going to keep staff or officers.
The Salt Lake City Police Chief is requesting a budget of $135 million. On nearly 15 million above what was last year, about a 12 and a half percent increase.
That just for the police department is 10 times our budget, our proposed budget.
I just sent it to you.
Okay, thank you.
12 and a half, yeah.
Okay. I'm, I'm happy to answer any other questions, but this is pretty standard. I think it's ridiculous. Quite frankly, that the state legislature has put this in place because we're not treating any of our employees, including directors or myself, any different than the rest of them that are, that we are treating with the employee handbook and policies that we have there. So happy to answer.
Cities could be.
What's that?
That, I'm assuming that's why.
I, I believe another city did that and that's why. But the reality of it is that, and we've lobbied for this in the past, is that if it's just a normal COLA and merit, there shouldn't really be any. I mean, why do you have a public hearing when you're doing a 4, 4.6% or this year's 4%?
That's good to really clarify in the regular session to just differentiate that.
Yeah.
This isn't specific to directors.
It's not, no, it's not.
It's citywide, but because of that bill, it includes them.
The public hearing is executive officers.
Yeah.
Yeah. Executive municipal officers, which again is, is eight of, are eight of us.
Regardless of it being equivalent with all other city employees, we still have to do a public hearing because it affects executive officers.
Right. We beat that one to death? Okay, building permits. I can pull that up and we can, let me, let me pull that up.
I can do that report in the meeting. It's, or I can do it now.
You want to do it in the meeting?
No, why don't you surprise us in the meeting? Beat it to tears, how's that?
Sorry, you're gonna have to wait a little bit longer.
Wait, 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 but are, are we going to get out of this meeting early? Do we want to? That's why I'm like, maybe take something from that meeting.
What, would you rather go? We can go over it. I mean.
Yeah.
It's a highlight of my meeting.
If we got time right now, you know?
All right, perfect. Here you go.
So basically we're just.
Because it's on the seven o'clock agenda, it has to be covered again.
Yeah, I'll cover it really quickly, but. Basically, I think we're up four from the last time I reported. So we're up to 149. On pace for close to 300 this calendar year if we, we stay consistent. You can see the breakdown there. Physical year, we're up to 269 in comparison to 223 last year. And then we have one temporary temporary use business license for the hidden orchards. That's the Cherry Hill Rollies.
Oh, yeah.
That, that do some agritourism type things. They've got on the description their weddings, but, and then there's four home occupations there. So if there's anything you want to discuss, we can do that. Otherwise I'll just lace through that in the regular meeting and for the public's benefit.
Is there, that business license, does that affect, remember the agritourism work that you were working on?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk about that in my reports. We actually have a proposal that we've, we've set a public hearing for, for the next planning commission meeting, which is a, a week from tonight, next Tuesday. So we are still working on that. This temporary use was actually a change that we made a year or two ago that kind of was like the, the first step in, in really supporting and allowing for agritourism to happen. What, what we're proposing and taking to the planning commission, which eventually will come to you for your approval, is kind of more of a permanent zoning solution that would support agritourism activity.
Okay.
I forgot to mention that we have finance director Shannon Hoffman here tonight. So any of the public hearings that we have on the budgets, she's, I'm sure she's happy to answer any questions or address anything that we need to address on that.
I have, I have one. Off the, I forgot what the number was, but what's, what is the total estimated property tax that we are working into this next year's budget? I just. Dollar amount.
1-9-4-4-5-6-0.
Got it.
Isn't, isn't that lower than?
No, this current year that we're in is, is about 1.765, something like that, I want to say. I was close. Okay, moving along, resolution 0602 will be for MAG senior meals funding. This has been something that we've worked out with MAG and this will provide for the funding for the the senior meal program. It does not provide all the funding. If you remember correctly, the last two years, they cut that and then cut it again. And but we're able to make up the rest of that in the budget to be able to continue to have both the Tuesday and the Thursday meals for our seniors.
And this is less than last year.
It is less than we got last year. That's correct. We're about, we're about $13,000 down from what it was two years ago. And then it got cut down once and then cut down again this year.
But, but one thing that I felt that nobody talks about is I thought that there was COVID money that was injected into that in 2021, somewhere in there, that really it's kind of a reduction from that. More than anything.
I thought we were expecting it to get reduced.
Yeah.
If I remember right.
Yes.
Just actual happening now.
So we've also talked to MAG and they're, they're approaching the state legislature and the county to try and recoup some of that funding that's been lost. That, this is a direct result of, of loss of federal funds, whether it be COVID or ARPA or whatever it was. It just isn't, isn't there anymore. And so they don't have it to pass along. But my understanding if from talking to MAG representatives of that, is that they're going back to try and see if they can bolster that some more.
And Art, is, uh, has it, has it been going well that second lunch? I know we wanted to give it time.
A lot depends on people's schedule and what the menu is. Tuesday is definitely a lot.
Smaller.
Less attended than Thursday, but I think it's going okay. They're doing a great job.
I, I would concur. I've seen less people there, but still, I would say you know, maybe 100 to 130 on the Thursdays and maybe 40, 50 on the, on the Tuesdays, something like that, Art. So still, still people are using it. Certainly it is. It's not.
Menu dictates that and people's personal schedules, doctor's appointments and you know, whatever.
Right. I, I think it'll, I think it'll continue to grow over.
Yeah.
Just as people get used to it and maybe adjust their schedules or we change the menu or whatever happens that way. I know when they first started it out, it was more of a lighter lunch and I don't know if they've changed that or not, but that also has to do with funding, right? If you don't have the funding, then you can't serve as full of a meal typically. So but I still want to say that it's, like I say, I want to say it's a third to half what we would normally have on the Thursdays.
And we haven't seen any like parking issues?
No.
Because I know it gets full, but I, but we're not quite there where it's like, there's no room for anyone.
Well, there's park, there's parking issues, but they're working on that.
Okay.
They're, so.
We're, we're asking staff and, and, and everybody else to park in their further away spots. So the seniors can park closer. Some, some people don't walk real well.
Volume of parking is not a problem. Location and closer to the building parking is a problem. There's no doubt about that. And that again is just in, some people just don't have the ability to walk. And and that, again, is just in some people just don't have the ability to walk that far or or, you know, use walkers or canes or that kind of thing. So volume of parking, we're we're okay on. We're not out of parking, but parking close to the building is a different story.
That's inevitable. There's only so many.
Right.
Spots next to the building.
Right. Okay, next item number nine, resolution 0300603 is Orchard Vista's uh Cortland Park Development Agreement Amendment. Um, the 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 main highlights on this one are that they the the developer is proposing a couple of changes. One is to go from stacked condos, which is more like apartments, just vertical going up. These will still be tall, not as tall, but going to uh townhomes instead of condos. So homeownership still, you still have the ability to have homeownership or not, these aren't going to be that we know of aren't going to be rentals, but people can buy them for rentals. Excuse me. Um, stacked flats are going to to uh townhomes. Uh roughly the same amount amenities, but I do want to point out that one of their amenities is 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 going away or is proposed to go away is the is the clubhouse. One of the things that the developers indicated is that they just don't see them being used. Fire pits and and clubhouses, fire pits are dangerous in a in a setting like this, but the clubhouse is something that they have just not seen being used. So but that's up to the council. If you decide that's something that's an important amenity that you want to keep, then so be it, and we can send them back. The the one thing I would indicate there is that they're losing, I want to say 10 units, so the the townhomes is 90.
Hundred and two to 92.
Yes. So they're they're losing 10 doors, which again helps with parking. Doesn't doesn't, you know, create as much of a parking need and that kind of thing. And so I'm happy to answer any questions if I can talk. Sorry.
Well, I I think part of the reason they really pushed this long is it gives them an easier way to get through the financing because of the way it would be marketed.
The the mayor brings up a good point. Condo financing right now, my understanding from the developer is that they offered 50% private funds to build the whole thing and the other 50% from the bank, and the bank wouldn't even do it. I'm like 50% leverage, 50% coverage, and the bank wouldn't do it. I I again, I don't. But for whatever reason, condos for both financing and insurance right now are a real challenge. For whatever reason, townhomes aren't. But condos, for whatever reason, are are really a a tough deal right now.
So i- is this this ma- will this match more than the other townhomes that are right by it? So it'll it'll match the environment a lot better.
Yes, sir. I believe that it will, not only going down in number, but look and feel, it's going to look very similar. May not be the same colors and style, but the 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 townhomes that they're proposing are in the proposal, and they seem fairly reasonable.
Yeah.
As far as the.
They're similar to US ones.
Yeah.
Do it does mention covered parking. Is that garages or they're just putting up?
Just covered parking. So that is actually another benefit to it that they were not going to have before with the stacked condos is that each unit will have one covered parking stall.
But no garages. It's just.
No garages, just a covered parking stall.
It's just, I was curious.
But before, there were no covered parking stalls. So there there is some, I I believe there's some benefit to the city and the community in the area. Like you say, it's going to match the character of what's already across the street. Covered parking, lower number of units, homeownership, all of those types of things. But again, they're they are taking out the clubhouse or proposing to take out that clubhouse, so.
I'm sure they'll they'll meet code, but how many parking units is it per you per?
I I don't know the number of that, but they are meeting the parking requirements.
They've actually got more parking uh spaces, I think, because of less homes.
That's what I would.
It's important to say that the development agreement is kind of a bubble chart and something that will hold them to, but they still need to go through an approval process, and those types of details will still need to follow our code. So uh this is not like an approval.
I know, I'm just curious.
Development. This is this is approval of the development agreement, which is 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 going to be a guiding document to to help shape uh what it'll look like through the approval process.
Yeah. Okay, questions, thoughts, concerns?
Let's move on.
The the only thing is, is remember how we changed the garbage?
Again, that that hasn't been addressed, and that will be taken care of when we get to that. That's one of the mechanics that Jason's talking about that will be addressed with that.
It does look like they've got dumpsters, spots for dumpsters, though.
Could.
It appears like they have dumpsters.
That's what I'm seeing.
I I know their their agreement was older, but I think we could bring them into agreement with that.
Yeah.
I think they're already planning on it.
Yeah.
Unless they're expecting us to do the pickup.
I don't think we want to do the pickup.
So so again, we now have a code in place that requires them to meet the code that's in place, which is they basically take care of the garbage. If they and I think it is.
I just want to make sure that the development agreement isn't.
It's not circumventing code. It absolutely, in fact, it can't because we haven't taken it to planning commission. Everything that's in here is non-land use. They still have to apply to all the land use codes that we have in place today.
Okay.
Okay. If 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 they were trying to get by land use codes, then it would have to go to planning commission and then back to you, but that's not happening here. Right, or exceptions to land use. That's correct.
I'm seeing four dumpsters. Spread out too. That's what sucks about.
Okay, uh, any other questions on that one? Lynn, are you still with us? Can you hear?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, resolution 0604 is an interlocal agreement with the Goshen Town for the Justice Court Services. We've had a contract for decades with Goshen and with Janola, the next two items. This is just re-upping that contract, making it more modern, updating our costs, et cetera. You may just remember that in the last year, well, two years ago, we we updated the police contract that we have with Janola for police and fire service or ambulance services. This is updating the court services. So just so everybody's aware, we have a court, a justice court, Janola has a justice court, and Goshen has a justice court. They're all in our building, and we administer those, the same judge, the same staff. They're just different held courts. They're just different courts by the different cities.
And and this is updating the amount of money.
Right.
They had agreed to pay in the past. It's just an increase to help cover those costs.
Yeah, they're.
We're not doing it all.
Is that already taken into account for next fiscal year budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's one of the things that will be changed from the tender to the final.
Okay.
The actual amount.
Right. And it does give us a COLA every in the contract. It gives us the ability to adjust that annually so that we can keep up with all of our stuff. We we actually have done that in the past, but not yearly. This allows us to do it annually to keep it up to date with COLA, merit, building costs, infrastructure, not infrastructure, but judge, that kind of thing.
Through your contract.
We uh I got caught off on the judge and everything, but we did write letters. We did introduce everything. We've had to make a couple of changes. Um, made a mistake in one and uh.
My mistake.
The um issue was, if I remember right, the last letters that I was sent, they were still having to take those before their council.
Yes.
Did you hear anything different?
So actually, Shannon had some conversation with the Janola folks today, and my understanding from Go- sorry, with the Goshen folks today, and my understanding from Janola is that they will have that on their next meeting. Both of them will have that on their next meeting, so it will not be effective until both parties pass it.
So so they were, they responded to us. Both both mayors responded to us very fast. So we've just been working through it.
Any other questions on those agreements? Brett's been through those and helped us to to prepare those, and so I think we're good to go on that. Uh, Jason, you want to take number 12?
Yeah, this is a really complicated ordinance. It's essentially changing six inches to eight inches uh for the the cement uh lawn mower strip. It just gives a little bit more space so that headstones and markers and stuff don't conflict with with mowers and damage each other. So that's really as simple as it gets.
Is it retroactive?
No.
Okay.
They can go out and take it out.
I I'll bring this up again in in the regular meeting at seven, but uh I'm going to suggest that each of us strongly consider the new cemetery land and consider making it a flat headstone area only for this very reason.
I agree. I agree. I want a huge monument there. I'm sorry.
Well, why a lot of the part that exists now then?
I want a statue.
Okay. Moving forward, DNPA, the the two items on there, the discussion of possible action, uh guaranteed maximum price for the water reclamation and sewer system upgrades. We talked about this two weeks ago. Let me let me tell you where we're at on that. So there's really three, four remaining costs that we have. The the big one is the 10.7, almost 10.8 million dollar cost for VanCon to do most of the construction. You'll notice that we're only at 9.3, which leaves us at 1.4, almost 1.5 million, because the 9.3 is the cash that we have today. We've talked about going out to bonding for the remainder of that. And and because we don't have the cash, we don't want to issue a contract for something that we don't have the cash to pay. So that's the method in the madness of the 9.36 million.
I wonder why there's a discrepancy between the bid.
You just found some cuts, but that makes sense.
Yeah.
Are you doing fine cuts?
And the contract, yeah.
So moving forward, there's three other items that we still owe on. One is for JUB to help us with construction engineering, which is reviewing all the specs and submittals and construction and all that kind of stuff. There's a little bit of geotechnical work from RBNG engineers, and then the last thing is we have about a half a million dollars worth of membranes that we still have to pay for. We ordered them almost a year ago or more than a year ago, but we haven't paid for the last portion of those yet. So between the 1.44 that's still there on the VanCon contract, the 400,000 for JUB, the 65,000 for the RBNG, and the half a million that's due on the membranes, that's where the 2.5 to 3 million dollar bonding number is that I've been discussing with you as a group over the last couple of months. So we're Shannon and I are actually meeting with Zion's Bank Public Finance on Thursday to start the bonding process. We've been a little slow on getting that going, but they we have a meeting with them on Thursday to to just, what do we need? How do we need to get going? I I would imagine the bonding process is usually 90 to 120, maybe 150 days at the most, but we're hoping to get that in place as quickly as possible so that we can still lock in all the pricing that we need to lock in with that 1.4 million that's still due.
But the bond has to be finalized before we can lock in.
Exactly. We don't want to, we don't want to have any other costs or any other lock ourselves in.
That's what we're waiting on.
That's right. That is what we're waiting on. That's correct. So.
One thing I was worried about was where do we stand with the contingency, you know, just in case? And we still have that.
Yeah.
Norm and I talked about it for some time yesterday. No.
Yep, yesterday, huh?
Went through everything. Um, I think we got it all covered for right now.
So as soon as we can get the bonding in place, we will bring back the remainder GMP and the the van the uh uh stuff for the for the JUB contract and the RBNG. Those stuff for the membranes is already under contract. We just don't have to pay for it until they get here. So we'll we'll bring that all back to you. I'm happy to answer any questions, but just focusing on the the VanCon guaranteed maximum price for the work that we would contract under this amount for now.
Do we know more or less what the interest rates are for us right now?
Uh, the last I heard, they were in the high fours, but that's changed a little bit over time, so I don't know the answer to that. We can we'll again, we'll be meeting with the with the um bonding folks on Thursday.
Housing's in the high sixes now.
Yeah, we're we're lower.
Yeah.
We usually get lower.
If if uh that that becomes available, can we refinance a?
We can.
Bond?
Yep. In in the municipal world, they call it refunding, but it's essentially a refinance, yes. If we get, in fact, we've done that before, the when when the previous administration was here, we've refinanced several bonds that have gotten us down one or two or more percentage points on the on the interest that was paid. So it's a way, it's absolutely as possible.
Well, I would think one or 2% on 10 on a $2 million loan.
It's it's a bit, yeah.
We usually 20 or 30 years.
We don't know the answer to that one yet. We'll we'll just, it's it's in that case, it's actually more what do we want to afford?
Yeah.
Than what the length is that they'll go out. I know some of our bonds are, some of our bonds right now are still 2050 to maturity, and those bonds have been in place for 10 plus years.
Well, we have some that are only 10 years.
We have some that are only 10 years. That's right. So.
But but that was set up that way because of the amount, more than anything. We wouldn't have to.
It 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 comes back to affordability. What do we want to afford uh as a payment over the next 10 years or five years or 20 years or whatever? I I'm I'm going to encourage that we go shorter term on that one, but just because it's a it's a smaller bond. But again, we're going to have to look at debt service. We're going to have to look at revenue. We're going to have to look at rate structure. All that stuff has to be looked at as we go through this, and then they'll help us to determine what that is.
Okay.
Okay?
I um I did have a question. Someone asked about the original bond we have on the
Uh huh.
WRF. I saw three sewer bonds.
There are.
Budget. Are they all for the WRF?
Uh, I don't think they're all for that.
31 and then one in 50 something.
Um, there are some 2011 bonds. Um, those are some that we just refinanced a few years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I want to say we have three sewer bonds.
We definitely have a different one, yeah.
Yeah.
There's some old 2011 bonds, and then there's the new WRF one.
And that's the one that's due in the like 2050 one or something?
I want to say the next maturity date's 2031 on one of them.
Yeah, two of them were in 31.
Yeah.
And then one was 50 something.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the 40 year one.
Okay.
Yeah. And and our our intent isn't to go 40 years, but again, we have to look at rates, and we have to get council, when I say council, the bond council, to help us to understand what we could, what we ought to afford.
That rate should be pretty good, though.
Yes.
Just a question, just uh going for this 1.7 million or whatever that number turns out, how does that affect our A-plus rating?
It shouldn't affect us. We we can bond up to, I'll have to get the numbers, and I'll talk to the bond council on that, but we're very low on what our bondability is right now. We we don't have a lot of, even though we have debt, we're not way up there. We could, we could probably, I'm not going for this, but we could probably 10 times our current bond debt service and still be fine. Not that we would, but we're we're in a really good spot. That's one of the reasons why we have a double A-plus credit rating is because we we have very low debt to income ratio, as it were, for for instance, like a house or a car or something like that.
Is is Suzie including these numbers in her
Yes.
final report to us? And we'll say see that at the end of the week or next week?
Uh, I'm hoping so. Mayor's referring to our financial uh sustainability model that Zion's Bank is updating for us right now. We should have that in the next couple of weeks, and then we can have that discussion as we talk about property taxes, talk about revenues, talk about moving forward and kind of see. So you you may remember that two years ago, they gave us a, two and a half years ago, they gave us a a financial sustainability model. They're updating it now that we have two years' worth of real data that we can put into that, and then we'll go from there. But yeah, that will all be considered as well as the rates, mayor, the 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 rate structure that we have and making sure that we have the coverage for the bond is all part of what we will go be going through. Okay? Any other questions on that? Okay, thank you. Good discussion. Uh, discussion possible action on RAP tax uh funding for projects. I'll I'll just pull those projects up, and you can kind of take a look at it. Remember that there's different categories that we try to hit. There's recreation. The numbers on the right-hand column are what's being uh recommended by the Rap Rap Tax Committee and the and staff. So soccer goals, $8,500, youth program at the library for $4,000. All of the other items on there are not getting funded or not proposed to be funded.
Yeah.
Going down, so that's a total of $12,500 for recreation. Arts category, cultural arts, museum, event banners and frames, seniors events, and then uh rap tax appreciation. Those are all uh part of the arts category. Uh, John Bradley will be here to discuss this as well in the regular meeting if I'm missing anything or don't have answers to this. Trails, uh new, part of that new trails would be for dirt for for improved dirt at the at the mountain bike skills park that we put in a couple of years ago. That that cost was fairly high at the time that we did that, and now we're trying to go back and bolster that. It would be more more uh suitable material rather than the native that would be put in there. Park improvements for um entry gates, et cetera, at Harvest View, and then batting cage replacement. Um, planting new trees in the in the uh parks throughout the city. I know Jason and Jason Callaway and John have been working on that and making up a plan for that. And then park improvements for the drinking fountain, the splash pad at Sunset Trails Park. That's on the that's on the parks category.
Which one is Sunset Trails?
It's the one in Summit Ridge, the large bowl-shaped one in Summit Ridge that has the water feature.
Yeah, okay.
Not in the best quality.
It's not the best quality.
Which is why it got brought out.
Right, which is exactly why it got brought up. That's correct. The biggest chunk of change that would be going for the rap tax would be for the the kind of outfitting of the of the rec building, the new rec building. Just so you're aware, that rec building is is uh just very, very close to being fully ordered, and they should be on site in the next couple of weeks to get those to start installing both that building and the cemetery uh storing and storage area. But this would be for uh two years' worth. By the way, there's a $70,000 carryover from last year that was approved with the draft tax committee that would go, and that's part of this 155 for equipment. Remember, we talked about this earlier, that if it's not bolted down, you can't use impact fees for it. That's what this is, is it's bikes, it's weights, it's other types of equipment that that are not bolted down and not part of what the what the capital facility is and can't use rap tax for.
I mean, the committee was hesitant about that whole 185, which is why they lowered it to
155.
155, which from, and John will be here to talk about it, but from my understanding was there was extra things that we didn't need right away to be able to use. there was extra things that we didn't need right away to be able to use this building to what we originally planned.
Yeah. And, and recognize that, remember, we have two phases to this building. The building's going in, then we have a building to finish on the inside and the power and the sewer and the water and everything else. And then this equipment would go in. So, this, this could be clear a whole year from, you know, June thirty next year is when that, this equipment could be coming in. Please.
Could, in, in the next council meeting or between now and then, could we see a uh plot plan for the cemetery property building? Just what that plan is? I haven't seen it.
Yeah, they're working on it right now. So, the, both the rec building and the cemetery building.
I'd like to see what they're doing for drives. I'd like to see how they're gonna stack up against the neighbors.
Yep.
Because it's a little bit of an angle, you know, what the plans are for putting dirt and keeping it in a good place.
They've got a, they've got a draft of the, of the site plan, but it's not probably ready for prime time at this point. They're just working on grading and, and that kinda thing. Like this, the one for the cemetery, you're probably gonna need a small retaining wall on that south side just to be able to have a good driveway through there. So, happy to answer any other questions. Outdoor volleyball court lights. So, I don't know if you've seen, but there's two essentially brand new volleyball courts at, at Centennial Park and they're beautiful. Really nice sand has been brought in, really nice mow strip curving around it. The, you know, much, much improved from what it was before. Well, this would install lights there.
And it gets used quite a bit.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are they gonna put it in the same place it used to be?
It is in the same place, but it's, but it's two of them now north to south. Instead of having one that went north to south, now the other courts go east to west, but they're stacked one, one north and one south. So, it, it's very, very nice.
And all the corn holes are gone, huh? Okay.
Uh, and then the last thing is a outdoor half basketball court up at the Badger Way uh park. This is one of the two uh minimally, I, I wouldn't say minimally, but just landscaped parks that were donated by D R Horton when they built those, those parks up, those, those homes up there. And this would put a, a, my understanding is a post-tension concrete half basketball court, much like what we have at Orchard uh Cove Park up on the north end of town.
Are we ever gonna do anything on the that property just down and to the north of Peter Rabbit's where the well house is?
So, we had some funding some years ago for some landscaping in there and that really never went anywhere. We didn't, we ended up, that, that actually happened to be the year that we had a really tight budget and it just didn't happen. So.
I remember those days, but uh.
We can, we can look at it.
Another project. I drove by it the other day just to look and see how it was and it it is still sketchy.
Yeah.
And, and there's one more thing and mayor, this is, it got brought up about what are we doing with that land that's by the billboards along Highland? And I, I brought up that you were interested in, in doing some work and I said, well, we didn't have to cover the fuel costs, which is what their intention was, is whatever costs would be required to do any additional improvements.
Three thousand.
Yeah.
It's not a big deal. However, uh, I need a survey that goes across it because there's a gas line right there. I don't wanna, I don't wanna put a trail across it and all of a sudden own a, a high pressure gas line. But it's still on the schedule. Just figure out when to do it, where to.
So, do you think, do you think that that's, that's a good expense or are you?
That's, that's.
Okay, okay.
That's fine.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Funding.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And if we don't use it this year, we can use it on something else and.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll buy the fuel. I don't know.
Okay. Next item. Get this bigger so I can see it. Um.
Public hearings.
Then we would just go from there on the, after the rap tax, we'll go into a public hearing for both, all three, the Community Development Renewal Agency, the local building authority and the special service district. And go from there. Happy to answer any other questions that you have or?
We're gonna, we're gonna do the public hearing for this other budget uh up right after we do that first formal hearing and, and the public hearing on it then.
Yeah, so the city will be first.
Separated from the others. We used to do them kinda together, but.
We, we can do it however you, so number six is.
We'll do it like it's set up here.
Okay, sounds good. We do have to enter those other three bodies to be able to go and consider those, those public hearings. There, there, there's not any other action other than just to hold a public hearing in those three bodies. So, there's no resolutions or anything that we gotta do there?
I will remind all of us again that during the public hearing, we cannot comment.
Well, I'm the worst one at it, so.
Mayor, that's all I have unless you wanna go over other items for the, for this meeting or if you have other items.
I don't, I just got a bunch of things that we'll probably talk about at the end in our uh our uh reports, so we can go over things then. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, let me just look at a couple of things. You know, the one thing I did wanna comment, uh it had to do with bonding and amounts of money that were going to the cities. And one of the things that the governor and the people that talked in that meeting the other day talked about the cost of building a home. And, and they were referring to thirty thousand dollars for a, for an average house for just the impact fees that were being paid
Nevermind.
And the building permit for a home as opposed to three thousand dollars thirty years ago, you know? And, and it was very lightly touched upon because you never had really much time to comment. But um, this is, this is kinda the thing where all this bonding comes back to us. If, if we don't have the capability to uh collect some money when these new residents come in and, and in fact, they're buying into our system. And, and we are setting this bond kind of in anticipation that we're gonna be able to pay for it with growth. And you hate to say, oh, you, yeah, we're gonna just grow, 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 but no matter what we do, we're still gonna have growth and growth will happen. They still wanna meet with us. The same properties that we met with a month ago, we'll meet with again this week. Who knows, you know? But I was kinda dismayed somewhat when they were complaining, yeah, we have to pay thirty thousand dollars. We don't. We're, we're less than that. The average I was hearing when uh I had talked to them was significantly less than that to build a house here, but it's still a lot more money than what had gone through in the past. But we're seeing the results of what you have to do to prepare to pay the millions to get the place ready for it, ready for growth, prepare for the future. And that's what we're doing. In the future, we're gonna have this growth because they are pushing growth in every meeting. And uh I just felt like we need to be prepared for that ourselves and you know, I'm sure a lot of people would say, well, do away with that. Well, you do away with it or you're gonna go back to all the homeowners and say, well, you're gonna have to kick in another few thousand dollars every year or two just to get us through this. When in fact, that's not a good ask either. So, anyway, that was it. Uh, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. I'll second.
Okay, Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
We'll see you at seven o'clock. Motion passed.